Call the City County Planning and Zoning Commission to order tonight. Monica, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Drain, Commissioner Gay.
Ma'am.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unseld.
Commissioner Vitale.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volkert.
Chair Warren.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. I missed something. Amy Scott is our new planner. We are so glad to have you with the Warren County Bowling Green Warren County Planning and Zoning Board. So, thank you, and we appreciate you being here tonight. You have the minutes of our September 16th meeting to have a motion or any questions or comments to have a motion to approve.
No move.
Second.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Gay?
Ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Warren?
Yes, ma'am. The minutes are approved. You have the, excuse me, Hamp, would you do your official duties?
Chair Warren. I request that you order that the record for tonight's hearings include all of the relevant statutory and regulatory provisions, the commission's entire file for each application on tonight's docket, and the qualification of the staff witnesses. And I'd finally request that you administer to them the oath.
You all swear to tell the truth?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. We have our subdivision and site development plans in your packet, commissioners that you have received. Are there any questions? Hearing none, they are approved as submitted. We have no old business tonight, and we've been asked that we would move to item number three as we are waiting on someone from items one and two to got stuck in traffic. So, item number three tonight is Weston Apartments LLC, care of David Alfred, has filed an application to rezone a portion of tract of land containing approximately 20.45 acres located zero Kobe Way and 263 John D. Jones Road, a portion of that with a general development plan, and all the commissioners will vote on that tonight. So, here we go.
Alrighty. We had a pre-application conference on August the 4th for the property you just described. The property has frontage on Kobe Way and John D. Jones Road. The current zoning of the property is RM3, and there's a little tiny piece of ag which I think might be covered up by the blue boundary, but it's there somewhere. The current use of the property is agriculture, and the future land use designation for the property is mixed-use commercial. This category description is on page two. For your reference, I'll read part of it, which states that the mixed-use commercial land use designation applies to strategic areas mostly undeveloped today that are located near designated industrial parks and accessible from major transportation corridors. These areas are envisioned as predominantly large-scale employment and business centers, albeit supplemented by compatible light industrial, retail services, hotels, and where appropriate, higher-density residential development. And then the description goes on a little bit further, but I won't keep going. But it's there for your reference. And then the applicants also submitted the narrative about midway down page two to help address compliance with the future land use map. Looking at the layout, lot sizes, and setbacks, we'll jump to the preliminary development plan or the concept plan that was submitted, and you'll see that the proposal includes four industrial lots, new industrial lots, which would be rezoned to light industrial. Looking at the transportation infrastructure, I think I had mentioned that this property has frontage on two roads. However, there is no access proposed or that would be permitted to John D. Jones Road, so all vehicular access would be from Kobe Way. Looking at, jumping to page three, surrounding land uses, I'll jump back to the land use map. You can see that the surrounding area is comprised of a mix of agricultural, single-family residential, multifamily residential, commercial, public, public-institutional, and industrial uses. And the south-central Kentucky Industrial Park is located just south of the proposed development. You can see the gray properties down here where the industrial park is located. And then under our area-specific policy review, this proposed development is located within the Walnut Valley Focal Point Plan. The staff evaluated seven policies. We found four of those to be in compliance, and there was one out of compliance, and there are two that the planning commission should evaluate for compliance, so I'll touch on those. The first being WV1C, which states that any project should be designed and developed in a manner that will not impair the reasonable long-term use of nearby properties in fulfillment of the land use policies of the Focal Point Plan and the Comprehensive Plan. So, the planning commission should determine compliance with this policy. WV3A, which states, "To ensure the quality of commercial development in the focal point, minimum acceptable design standards should be established. All building exterior facades and materials should be reviewed by a committee of professionals such as architects, planners, and others." And the planning commission should determine compliance with this policy. I'll go over some of the proposed materials here in just a little bit when we get to the development plan conditions. And then last, for your consideration, WV3B, which states that commercial zoning should be limited to planned unit development, office professional, neighborhood business, and general business, and since the proposed zoning is light industrial, that would not comply with this particular policy. Jumping onto page five, looking at our traffic impact study requirements, these are listed in section 314 of the zoning ordinance, and a traffic impact study was not required by the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet. The Bowling Green Public Works Department also did not require a traffic impact study, but requested that the applicants agree to coordinate all access along Kobe Way with the Bowling Green Public Works Department, as well as any shared access requirement along the southwest Parkway. And the applicants did agree to this request in development plan condition three. Jumping onto the development plan conditions, looking at number one, that relates to building orientation; two, looks at location of parking; three, addresses access to the site; four, includes requirements for open space landscaping and parking setbacks; number five outlines provisions for tree preservation; six includes requirements for screening; seven addresses utility placement; eight are those material requirements, and there's kind of two separate sections, I'll read through these really quickly. So, letter A relates to the office or administrative portion of a building, and in this case, exteriors shall have walls of durable and attractive materials such as, but not limited to, brick, stone, exposed aggregate, textured concrete, glass, or designer blocks. And then letter B would be all other portions of a building, not covered under letter A. From ground level to a height of at least six feet, the exterior front wall and the two exterior sidewall shall be constructed of high-quality and durable materials such as, but not limited to, brick, stone, exposed aggregate, textured concrete, glass, or designer blocks. Number nine includes restrictions for signage; ten addresses compliance with local, state, and federal regulations; eleven outlines prohibited uses for the development; twelve looks at sinkholes; thirteen includes requirements for landscaping and buffering along John D. Jones Road; and fourteen addresses location of parking. Looking at the Focus 2030 category review on page seven, the staff evaluated 15 items. We determined that eight of those items were in compliance, zero were out of compliance, and there are seven items that the planning commission should evaluate for compliance, the first of those being LU 1.1.3, which looks at compatibility; next LU2, which looks at quality of development and character of the area; jumping down to LU 2.8 and LU 2.8.1, which deal with the Walnut Valley Focal Point Plan; next HN1 and HN1.3, which look at infill development and the impact on the character and pattern of development in the area; and then last ED1, which looks at diversification of the local economy. Going to wrap up on page one with our points to consider. The proposal is consistent with the future land use map and the mixed-use commercial category. The proposed development complies with the majority of the site characteristics review criteria and the review criteria for site design, and meets the minimum requirements in the zoning ordinance. Third, the planning commission should determine whether the proposal is consistent with the policy recommendations and intentions outlined in the Walnut Valley Focal Point Plan; and last, compatibility of the proposed development should be determined by the planning commission. That is all I have for the staff report, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Hurt. Commissioners, are there any questions of Ms. Hurt?
Rachel, do you know what the proposed use is, or do we have a proposed use yet?
That may be a better question for the applicants. I don't know if these are just four industrial lots with preliminary footprints, or if there's, if any of these are under contract, I'm not sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. Any other questions for Ms. Hurt? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is the applicant here tonight? Mr. Penn, would you state your name and address, please, sir?
Good evening. My name is Gaines Penn. My professional address is 1101 College Street, Bowling Green, Kentucky.
Or tell the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
On behalf of Weston Apartments, the owner of this property and much of the surrounding acreage, I have with me the owner of the LLC, Mr. Alfred, as well as Brian Shirley from ACES, who did the design concept, and also believe we have one of the prospective owners or a prospective buyer of one of the lots to address Commissioner Graham's question as an example of what could go into one of these lots. I would just point out that we've done our best to make this comply with the Walnut Valley Focal Point. We believe that it's consistent with the flume which envisions light industrial use as part of this property, so that's where we started, and it's a little inconsistent to say the focal point doesn't allow light industry when the flume does. So, we're trying to meld those two concepts together, and that's what we've come up with. So, if I have, we have to ask any questions.
So, in the layout that we have before us, primarily the buildings, of course, are facing Kobe Way, but we do have this secondary road, if you will, that comes around behind it, and some residential across the road. And so, the reason I ask the question is, it doesn't indicate, it doesn't seem to indicate a landscape buffer or anything to shield the view from, what's the name of that road that's behind?
John D. Jones Road.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, or that residential that's behind it.
Right.
If the buildings were indeed really located this far away, it probably would minimize any need for a landscape buffer there. But given that this seems to be probably a perspective layout, not necessarily the layout that would be used, would your client be, would your client consider some sort of a landscape buffer? I'm going to point here, kind of up into that corner.
Number 13. It's on 13.
So, the whole thing is?
Yeah.
Ah, okay. I apologize.
If I could address your specific concern, if you notice the long stretch of John D. Jones Road there, from where, from the skinny point of the lot, all the, you know, from there up to where John D. Jones makes that bend in the road.
Oh, so it goes the whole length of the John D.?
Yeah.
Okay, I misunderstood. I apologize.
Yeah, that's fine. I don't think by ordinance we're required to do that, and we actually added that in along that line.
Very good. So, thank you for that consideration.
Yes, sir.
That's all I have.
Commissioners, any other questions for Mr. Penn representing the applicant? Hearing none. Is there any opposition to this request? Hearing none, I would call for a vote. Thank you, Mr. Penn.
Make a motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment together with and condition upon a general development plan, docket number 202156ZBG. Based upon testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted Focus 2030 Comprehensive Plan, as demonstrated by its compliance with objective and actions items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted Comprehensive Plan. Further requests this motion include a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Mr. Gay?
Ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Warren?
Yes, ma'am. Motion is approved, and it's a final action. Thank you for y'all's time tonight. Item number four is 202157ZBG. Wayne and Elva Overholt and MNM LLC, care of Matt and Nick Fuqua, have filed an application to rezone tracts of land containing approximately 1.635 acres located zero Enterprise Court, located approximately one-tenth of a mile from Russellville Road from light industrial to RM4 multifamily residential with a general development plan. And, Mr. Jones, you will make the presentation. Thank you.
Sir, thank you, Chair Warren. We had a pre-up on August 25th for the properties you see outlined in yellow, where, again, applicants are proposing to rezone that roughly 1.6 acres located at zero Enterprise Court from light industrial to RM4 to develop the property with a maximum of 40 multifamily residential units. You'll see here that the existing zoning is light industrial for the properties. The existing land use is vacant. The future land use is high-density residential, which is a potentially compatible zone with this flume designation. And the proposed density is 24.45 dwelling units per acre. The properties have, were zoned I-1, which is light industrial, in the original zoning for the, for the subject properties, and converted to light industrial from I-1 in 2001 when they changed the zoning ordinance. If you flip over onto page two, we've got your future land use map category for high-density residential, and I can go through that if you guys like, but if not, then we'll go to the site characteristics review. Again, we can go over any of those that you all want. I will highlight the natural features section, points out that there are sinkholes known to exist in this vicinity, and a cave may also be present within the vicinity of the proposed development. Under site design compatibility review, the surrounding density for the current multifamily developments on Enterprise Court is 19.8 dwelling units per acre at 184 Enterprise Court on the other side of the street, I believe, and then 20 dwelling units per acre at 179 Enterprise Court, which I think is the one next door. And again, the density for this proposed one is 24.45 dwelling units per acre. The existing multifamily residential structures located on Enterprise Court that I just mentioned are comprised of brick and vinyl. Other structures in the vicinity have exteriors comprised of a mix of brick, stone, metal, vinyl, and concrete block. Flip over to the next page. Under building orientation, I will mention that staff suggested the applicants that buildings fronting Enterprise Court, staff suggested that they should face Enterprise Court. Otherwise, side or rear-facing facades along Enterprise Court should be screened, and the applicants indicated to staff that the existing buildings on Enterprise Court currently have a side facade facing the road and feel their site will continue this existing character and pattern of development by not orienting the buildings towards Enterprise Court. And then under proposed open space, the applicants agreed in DPC number seven to provide a minimum 20% open space within the proposed development, and further agreed to connect sidewalks that are internal to the development to the existing sidewalks on Enterprise Court. There's no area-specific policy review applicable to this development, so we'll move on to the development plan conditions, of which there are none. Number one, all utility, all new utility lines to be located underground. Number two, buildings shall not exceed two stories in height. Three is that exteriors of all structures shall be comprised of brick, stone, cement, board, or other modern masonry material. No plain or split-faced block shall be utilized. Number four, the development shall not exceed 40 residential units. Five, the property shall be developed with uniform parking lot lighting. Six, the property shall have no more than one managing entity for the development. Seven, that the aforementioned 20% open space and sidewalk connection that I mentioned before. Number eight, the developer will properly address any sinkholes on the property, and that any such sinkhole shall be repaired to an engineered standard approved by the Bowling Green Public Works Department prior to construction above said sinkholes. And number nine, that the entrances will be coordinated with the city of Bowling Green prior to submitting a building permit, and they will be installed per the city's standards. Flip over to the Focus 2030 category review, which is mostly on the next page. Staff identified 14 items, six of which comply, eight of which are up to the planning commission's determination. LU 1.1, 1.1.1, and 1.1.2 state that it complies with the high-density residential flume category, and the planning commission should determine if the proposal is compatible with the surrounding area in LU 1.1.3. The proposal may comply with LU2 and 2.1. If the planning commission determines the proposal will be a high-quality development that includes improved design standards tailored to preserve the character of the area. The applicants committed in DPC number seven, again, to that minimum open space requirement, and the connection with the sidewalks, and the planning commission should determine if this is adequate and usable amount of open space and complies with LU 2.1.1. The proposal generally complies with LU 2.3.1 and TR 2.1, as the applicants agreed in DPC number nine to coordinate the entrances with the city of Bowling Green. The proposal complies with NCR 1.1 and 1.3, as the applicants provided considerations for sinkholes in DPC number eight. The proposal may comply with HN1 and 1.3 if the planning commission determines the proposal is compatible, infill development that will maintain or improve the existing character of development within the area, and if it will strengthen the residential uses surrounding. And the proposal may comply with HN2.1 and HN4 if the planning commission determines if the location of the planned development is suitable for the proposed housing type, and if the proposed development is believed to enhance the array of housing options available in the area. And with that, we can flip back to the first page with our, wrapping up with our points to consider. One, the proposal is consistent with the flume and high-density residential category. Number two, that the proposed development complies with the majority of the site characteristics review criteria and meets the minimum requirements of the zoning ordinance. Number three, that the proposed development complies with a majority of the review criteria for site design, with exceptions noted regarding building orientation and potential screening treatments for side and rear-facing facades, as I mentioned a moment ago. And lastly, of course, that the planning commission should consider if the proposed development is compatible with the surrounding area. That's all I've got for the staff report, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Jones?
Chair, I have a question. Could you put the arrow that's bordered in yellow back up of the property?
Happy to.
Okay. What is the distance between the, I'm assuming that's the rear of the buildings, between that and the property line, that's, I guess, that's the west side? Is there, what is the distance between?
Talking about between the, the building on the adjacent parcel and this property line?
Right.
I'm not sure. It, we don't have that called out on here. That's a good question.
The little gray strip, is that parking, or is that, what is that?
On the far southeastern side?
Right.
Uh, yeah, that's parking.
Okay. Okay. So, there's evidently a pretty good distance between the property and, you would assume, between the property and the buildings, right?
The property line looks like it's, you know, five or 10 feet from the buildings, if that's what you're asking.
The reason I'm asking, I'm just trying to determine whether or not there's a need for any type of buffering between the properties and the proposed development on that particular side of the building.
Because it's multifamily, touching multifamily, the applicants aren't required to buffer it.
Okay.
And they didn't add any commitments to that in their DPCs, but you might ask them further.
I assume that's probably going to be a parking lot between there as well.
Right. That's what the gray strip is, I'm assuming. Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
So, for one, I like the way either you, staff has, so we've got one entity managing, that's very, very helpful. We've done a good job of addressing the exterior. The one thing I don't see that I would like to see is it doesn't indicate any type of uniformity. Do we know if this is the same developer that owns some of the others, or do we, we don't have any elevations or anything?
The applicants did not supply any elevations as part of this application, but again, that would probably be a good question for them.
Thank you, Zach.
Any other questions for Mr. Jones? Any other questions for Mr. Jones? All right. Are the applicants here? And do you have a spokesperson? If you would state your name and address, please, sir.
Matt Fuqua, 543 Foxmore Drive.
Swear to tell the truth, sir?
I do.
Thank you, Mr. Fuqua. And you heard a question from Commissioner Graham.
Uh, go ahead.
So, this isn't a requirement, by the way, but we try to get some uniformity when we do projects like this. And if I look at the aerials, it appears that the other projects that have been done in that area have some similar uniformity. So what is your thought there? There are no elevations, and that's why it's, what's spurring the question?
Good question. As far as, you know, the overall design and look, they're going to be similar to many of the other A-Plexes that have been approved in recent years. They're also going to look very similar to what's the current there. There's forty that are currently there. We didn't build those, or we don't own those, and those have vinyl on them, ours are not. So they're going to look similar in stature, but a little different in terms of exterior makeup.
So would you say, or is, is, do you anticipate that both of these structures will, will be, let's see, is it two buildings?
Um, it's two different buildings. The ones on the left there are one-bedroom buildings, and the ones on the right are two-bedroom buildings. And they're all going to look essentially the same from an, from a, from a color scheme and, and.
And also from an architectural perspective?
Correct.
So those two larger buildings would be almost a mirror image of one another, is that correct?
That's correct.
And the three smaller buildings would be a mirror image of one another?
That's correct.
Okay, very good. Is it possible for us to incorporate something into the DPCs to, to just get that on the record, Hamp?
Yeah, that would seem to fit into the development plan, conditions number three, which deals with the exterior of all structures. And we might add a sentence at the end of that that says, "The exteriors of the structures on premises shall be uniform architecturally and by materials." Is there a third item?
I think that would get us there. Clearly, the developer's intent is to have, have all three, and as long as he's the one doing the development, we won't have an issue. It only, it would only come up if, for some reason, he had decided to sell it before it was actually developed. And so we just want to ensure some uniformity there, that those structures will look similar. And so the term I used was a mirror image of, of the three smaller structures and a mirror image of the two larger structures. I'm not sure if that's necessary, but that's why, that's why we have you.
I think we just like a maximum number of floor plans or building plans.
There you go, very nice.
I think on other applications before.
So we would have a maximum of one-floor plan for the larger buildings and one-floor plan for the smaller buildings, correct?
Correct.
All right, very good. If we could incorporate that, that would get us there, because that would necessitate the same appearance as well.
So when you say floor plan, that, I don't think you have a bigger deal out of this, but that would, in my mind, describe the interior of the buildings. And what we're concerned with is that there would be a single exterior treat, there would be no more than two exterior treatments.
I'm okay with that. And that's, that's the intent.
Mr. Fuqua, you agree to those changes?
I do.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Hamp. Commissioners, any other questions for Mr. Fuqua?
Mr. Fuqua, what is the anticipated timeframe on development?
With your approval, we're ready to get started very soon.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fuqua. Any other questions for Mr. Fuqua? Thank you, sir. Is there any opposition to this request? Hearing now, we call for a motion, please.
Make a motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment, together with and conditioned upon a general development plan, document number 202157ZBG. Based upon testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted focus 2030 comprehensive plan, as demonstrated by its compliance with the objective and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Further requests, this motion includes a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Second.
Mr. Gay?
Yes, ma'am.
Ma'am?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Starks?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Warren?
Yes, ma'am. The motion is, has been approved, and we, recommendation goes to Bowling Green City Commission. Our next items are items one and two. Frida F. Davis and New Singular Wireless PCS LLC, doing business as AT&amp;T Mobility and Tillman Infrastructure, have filed an application for approval of a wireless communication tower located on a portion of, of a tract of land location, located at 1080 East Henry Gold Road. This property is owned agriculture. And if approved, then we will have a variance for 2021V23 from the minimum setback of a thousand feet from a residential district structure or use on the property located on a portion of land, a tract of land located at 1080 East Henry Gold Road. This property is owned ag. So Ms. Hurt, you're up again.
Thank you, Chair Warren. We had a pre-application conference on March the 11th for this application before you this evening. It's the first cell tower application we've had all year, and we're already in October, so. The proposed location of the tower is generally in the box outlined in yellow on the aerial. As you mentioned, the current zoning of the property is agriculture, current use is also agriculture, and the future land use designation is rural density residential. A zoning map amendment was not required for this application, so the Planning Commission should determine if the proposed tower complies with the goals and objectives outlined in the comprehensive plan regarding telecommunications facilities. We'll look at the site layout here. You can see Interstate 65 is there to the west, and the proposed tower location is kind of right here in this general box, which was that same yellow box we outlined on the aerial just a second ago. This is a zoomed-in version of the plan where you can see the compound area with the tower location and other supporting facilities that are outlined on this sheet. Then this is the tower elevation. The proposed tower is 199 feet tall, and we'll get to some of the development standards or requirements here in just a second. But first, we're going to look at the focus 2030 category review, and we reviewed four applicable items. The first of those being LU 214 and NCR 1.1.6, which deal with preservation of existing vegetation. And if we jump back to the aerial view here, you'll see that the yellow area is just outside of that existing tree line, and so the applicants are proposing to preserve that existing tree line, and therefore, the application would comply with these items. Next, looking at CF9 and CF9.1. The Planning Commission should determine if the proposed tower will advance telecommunications and wireless infrastructure in Warren County. And then we will jump on to our zoning ordinance review and review some of this information. I won't go through it all, but regarding minimum location standards, we do have specific setbacks that have to be met. The setback is actually sixty percent of the overall height of the tower, which is 199 feet, making the required setback from all property lines at least 119.4 feet. And the proposed tower location does comply with the setback requirements. Letter B, all towers shall be setback from any residential district structure or use a minimum of 1,000 feet. The proposed tower location would not meet this, which is why there is a variance that has been filed concurrently with the cell tower application. We'll get to that in just a second. Jumping onto page four, accessory facilities shall comply with the setback for the district in which the tower is located, which is the ag zoning district. The proposed accessory structures, again, if we jump back to that compound area, do comply with the zoning requirements in the ag zone for setbacks. Letter D looks at onsite vegetation. Again, they're proposing to preserve as much of that existing vegetation as possible due to the proposed location of the tower. Letter E deals with lighting. The Federal Aviation Administration stated that the tower that's proposed this evening is not required to be lit, and so therefore, it will not be. Jumping down to number two at the bottom, color of towers shall be white or gray. The application complies with this requirement. Number three deals with co-location, and the tower has been designed to accommodate co-location of future antennas. And if you look at the compound plan that's depicted here on this sheet here on the screen, also depicts future lease area that could be utilized by other carriers. Looking at the variance information, about halfway down page five, you'll see in section 526E5A1B, that is where we have the requirement of a 1,000-foot setback from any adjacent residential district structure or use. And if we jump to this exhibit here, it's kind of hard to see, but the nearest residence is right here, and so the proposed setback from that residence is 569 feet. And so the variance request this evening is for a variance of 431 feet to grant relief of that typical 1,000-foot setback. The findings for variances are listed on page five, and those are outlined in KRS 100.243. Those are there for your reference. And then on page six, the applicant supplied the narrative that's listed there in that italicized text, takes up about half of the page. I'm not going to read through that, but the applicants may want to speak more to that here in just a little bit. With that, I'll jump back to the points to consider on page one. The proposed tower complies with the majority of the site characteristics review criteria and the majority of the review criteria for site design, with the exception of the setback from a residential district or use. If the proposed variance is approved, the development would meet the minimum requirements of the zoning ordinance. And second, the Planning Commission should consider if the requested variance arises from special circumstances which do not generally apply to land in the vicinity, or if the strict application of the provisions of the regulations would deprive the property owner of reasonable use of the land. That is all I have for the staff report, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Hurt. Commissioners, any questions for Ms. Hurt?
Could you go to the, Rachel, could you go to the aerial, or the satellite, I should say? And so from there, so I got two questions here. One, is it a residential structure that triggers the need for a, for a variance?
In this case, yes. And it's the existing structure on the parent tract. It's right here.
Right, and so could you point to, is that where your mouse is? Is that the structure?
Yes.
Okay, so would it be safe to say that the owner of that home is also the seller of this property?
Correct.
Okay. And so the second part of the question is, what is the, is, does the comprehensive plan specifically say 1,000 feet for cellphone towers?
That's a standard in the zoning ordinance.
Aha.
Where that setback is listed.
Got it, very good. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. Any other questions for Ms. Hurt?
Rachel, this particular cell site, is it a, you know, if it's a 5G cell site?
Not sure, but I'm sure the applicants will know that answer.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Starks, any other questions for Rachel? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I believe our applicants made it from Shepherdsville, Kentucky, is that correct?
Yes, I want to offer, well, first of all, let me identify myself. It's a pleasure to appear before you again. My name is David Pike. I'm a principal with Pike Legal Group, PLLC, PO Box 369, Shepherdsville, Kentucky. The rest of our contact information is of record in the somewhat voluminous documentation that we've been peppering your staff with.
Pike, you swear to tell the truth?
I do.
Thank you, sir.
And again, I apologize for my tardiness due to an hour and a half traffic jam. We did, however, do a good job of recreating a more modern version of Smokey and the Bandit in order to make up most of the time. I have some hearing presentation binders I would like to distribute. Then at that point, I'd like to have a kind of a conversation with the, with the commission to see how voluminous a presentation you'd like from me, since in my line of work, it's always good to play to an empty room. So if, with your permission, I'll distribute those binders.
If the commissioners would like them, that's fine.
Okay, good? Okay.
You don't have to take them home, and there won't be a test.
Yeah, I was going, yeah, I was going to say, as long as we don't have to read them or know what's in them.
We certainly appreciate the, the time and effort you have put into preparing this. Many of us have zoned property like this in the past, so if, if, if we have unanimous consent here, we may be open to just limiting our question, just specific questions for this particular zoning. And I'm very much here at the pleasure of this commission.
We will, I think the unanimous consent would be an abbreviated report?
In that case, we'll try to make it very abbreviated. I've distributed, I've distributed some hearing presentation binders that include a, a printed-out copy of the somewhat lengthy PowerPoint presentation that I have here, that, you know, that, of course, we've tried to be thorough, based on the importance of this to our customers and to the community as a whole, and also to AT&amp;T. I think, you know, kind of jumping ahead to, I suspect the issue that is of most concern is the variance-related issue that there's already been a couple of questions on. First of all, it's our position that I, that this is a waiver as opposed to a variance, but since staff views it as a variance, we went ahead and cast our proof in those terms. We provided specific findings in a tab in the binder that we've distributed that, of course, gives you point by point all of the evidence that supports the proposition that this is appropriate. First of all, there's, and just as an aside, it's also our view, and, you know, for, for whatever it's worth, when you get ready to revisit your regulations, ultimately, we think that sort of 1,000-foot setback is very counterproductive for the community, and it tends to prevent the deployment of wireless technology where you need it. Ultimately, aesthetics in the Sixth Circuit cannot be utilized as a basis for a cell tower disapproval in a long string of cases, and certainly from an engineering perspective, it's not justified. Having said all that, even within those parameters, I think we clearly meet the criteria, and yes, it's our property owner who lives in that house, and she has obviously consented to it and fully supports the application and the cell tower's placement. To answer your question on 5G, Mr. Starks, not immediately, but all, but this tower will be engineered to deploy that technology at this location. We will be deploying FirstNet, which is, of course, the brand-new, state-of-the-art emergency response communication system that we're also working on trying to retrofit existing towers with in Warren County. Brief enough, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, thank you. Pike.
We'll make sure that the binder is.
Thank you for picking up my loose ends, Counselor, I appreciate it.
I think Mr. Graham has a question.
So it, it, it sounds as if you have addressed this, but I just want to make sure. How did you select that particular location on this property? Is it topography? Is it?
It's, it's topography, and it's also the fact that it meets your setbacks. Because again, you've got some pretty strict setback criteria here, and by putting it where we did, we tended to maximize those numbers. And, because although it wasn't possible to meet the 1,000 feet, we wanted to try to configure it, so we did our best job.
You've got it as far away as you, as you, as you reasonably can.
And, yes, and we meet all of the property line setbacks, which is also key.
Very good.
Thank you.
Pike, we appreciate your time here tonight and your effort to be here. Commissioners, any other questions for the applicant?
In that case, since it appears to be going the right way, I will sit down with style.
Okay, is there anybody in the audience that has any objections? Don, you got objections? All right, we call for a motion. We have two motions tonight. The first one is for the approval of the communications tower, and then if approved, the second one would be a variance of the minimum setback of 1,000 feet to 400 and however many feet it is, it's in the motion.
31.
431, thank you, Mr. Gay.
Make a motion to approve the proposed telecommunications tower application, document number 20211TC County, T County. Based upon testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed telecommunications tower is consistent with the adopted focus 2030 comprehensive plan, as demonstrated by its compliance with objective and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed telecommunications tower application is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Further requests, this motion includes a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Second. Mr. Gay?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Warren?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. The motion for the cell tower has been approved, and then we need a second motion for the variance, please.
Motion to approve the variance request. I make a motion to approve the request for the variance at 1080 East Henry Gold Road, document number 2021V23, variance of 431 feet from the minimum setback of 1,000 feet from the residential district structure or use. Testimony presented in this public hearing has shown that the granting of the variance will not adversely affect the public health, safety, welfare. It will not alter the essential character or general vicinity, and will cause, will not cause a hazard or a nuisance to the public. It will not allow an unreasonable circumvention of requirements of the zoning regulations.
Second.
Mr. Gay?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Warren?
Yes, ma'am. The motion is approved. Thank you all for your time.
On behalf of my clients, thank you for your favorable ruling, and also personally, I appreciate the courtesy in adjusting your schedule.
Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Be, be safe driving up 65 tonight. All right, would you like your binders back, Mr. Pike?
It's all yours.
All right, thank you very much. Do we have any other new business tonight? No new business? Are there any discussion items? We appreciate everybody being here tonight. Don, thank you for being here, and. And our meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Hey, Zach.